The next guy just told me to keep my water dropping helicopters.
Mm-hmm. We want to. Say bye. And this is. It was outside in the parking lot. Uh. They texted us. Yeah, they're denying that. God, please. Okay. Yeah. We're there to deploy again. It's time. Really? Yes, definitely. Yes, we. Not well. Twenty-seven legislative. Page.
So you all have an agenda, what? What I want to do is go through the. Well, first off, I want to say that we are balanced based on our current tax rate. We'll look at what we, what's been included after we do a synopsis of the revaluation. And I'm going to go through the budget process, review, revaluation analysis, and then look at our financial condition. And then if discussion and questions, always feel free to stop me. Um, so. The. Where we are right now, being balanced is great for this point in the year. Well, you'll get your balanced draft budget, um, April eighteenth, I think. If you will, you'll have a week review it, we'll meet the twenty-fourth after, right after that meeting. Uh, go through the draft, look at the fee schedule, then that will be. The budget will formally be presented to the board May eighth during the meeting. And then we'll be on track to adopt it the first meeting in June. So at this point, I want to remind department heads that the grant spending deadline was March thirty-first. And then our year-end spending deadline is May the fifteenth. So anything besides routine purchases need to be completed by then so that we can get the receipts and have it closed out by June thirtieth. Um, any questions? Okay. So we'll do, uh, our revaluation analysis. This is a handout. Um, we'll start with the one by township. It's this right here. Okay. Um, so official, I've seen this in our previous budget meeting, but I think it's important to reiterate. Um, where we're at, uh, oh, where we fall within the reevaluation this year. So what you're looking at is a comparison, uh, as to twenty-twenty-one reevaluation compared to the twenty-twenty-five. And seeing the percentage increase. Um, the average overall is the seventy-five, but as you can see, the town of Silver and the green is, um, twenty-eight percent. We're second to the bottom out of the whole county percentage-wise. Um, I would also like to point out that this does not include any appeals, which we're going to go over on the next sheet. So, um, there's that, and then also, um, when you're, we can't. The only way we can budget for our. Of our property tax collection is if we collected it at a hundred percent the previous year. So that doesn't typically happen. So I just wanted to point those two out to indicate that it shows the twenty-eight percent. There's other factors that are taken into consideration when you actually go to budget.
Those other factors too, people like.
Yes.
It's not going up.
Right.
Yeah. Someone will come in and ask for higher valuation.
Right. So, so we're already second to the bottom, and then you've got some other factors that this is not looking at. Um, just wanted to point that out. So then on the next sheet, we have, um, the effect of the tax rate. Um, so during for a reevaluation, keep in mind that the only thing that that takes into consideration is real property. But we also, of course, have, um, personal property utilities on the vehicles that are also based on the. But the reevaluation itself is just looking at real property. Um, we had, so we looked at over the three-year period from twenty-one to twenty-five. The annual, um, growth we received. And you can see we've got it broken down between twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four. Twenty-four, we actually were in the negative on our tax base growth. Um, those average out to point one-eight percent. So that, that is a very low growth rate that we are realizing in between budget years. Especially when fifty-one percent of taxes is what covers our budget. So, um. That's, that's low. We, most of the time, the way to gain, we're able to gain the values during the reevaluation. Because we don't have the growth in time. Um. Then if you'll go down, there's a blue highlight, there's an overall. Um, this is broken down, which you can see, um, the residential and commercial of the real. And of course, our commercial is the largest. Um, then we have the personal utilities and the total tax value. And that's compared, um, for the twenty-twenty-five estimated reevaluation values versus the actual twenty-twenty-four. And you can see we've got, here's the difference. Um. Then in the purple, the difference here is this total value is taking into consideration. Um. The appeals that we know of as of now. Um, so it starts out, you know, this six twenty-one, six hundred and twenty-one million. And then we'll look in there, some, the decrease there. Um, based on currently the budget that we proposed. One cent tax rate would equal fifty-seven thousand, three sixty-two. And you can just, there's some examples, if it's two cents and three cents, but basically you just multiply that times the cents. And you get the, the value based on that, or the, the revenue based on that. Um, then we have the impact of tax increase on home values. This is just to more or less show that what the penny does based on the value of a home. Um, this was presented at the previous budget meeting and, um. The average home is just a little bit less than the three hundred thousand within city limits. So you're looking at for one cent, um, it's thirty dollars a year. If you divide that at monthly, you'd be looking at like two dollars and fifty cents a month. And you can go on out and look at some different examples. Um, the appeals. That we have, uh, going on right now, and this is what, um, was provided by Jackson County. But we had twenty-nine residential appeals, which accounts to three point nine percent. Um.
Is that three point, you'll get asked.
Yeah.
Is that three point nine percent of the volume of homes or three point nine percent of the value?
It's of, it's of the value.
Okay.
Because that value is what drives our revenue.
Of course, I just didn't know.
Yeah, we did it of the values.
Yeah.
Oh, so three point nine percent of our total, uh, real property value.
So the same thing with commercials, we had thirty-three appeals, but look at the percentage for the commercials.
It's a big one.
There was, there was pretty significant, big, big ones. Um, so. Obviously, until that's settled, of what we're going to be, we can't budget for what we don't know that we, we can be certain we'll receive. Um, so we just, um, there's the appeal process that I was just going to quickly. There's bullet points to tell you kind of the summary of them. But basically, we are in the informal appeal process right now. Where that has gone to the tax assessor's office, and they're currently reviewing, um, all the appeals. And they will make a determination within their department and bow out to the property owners what they determine. So that's where we're at. We don't know exactly how long that's going to take. But once that happens, then there's the formal appeal process, which, um. That goes to the Board of E and R at the county. If the taxpayers are not happy with what been determined within the tax office. Uh, the Board of E and R will review all the information and they give, they render a decision. And the decision notice will be mailed within thirty days of the year. Um, so. Once that happens, and if somebody still wishes to appeal, then they appeal it to the Property Tax Commission. And that's usually heard, um, in Raleigh. Um, and they make the decision on that. Um. And typically, when that happens, they don't pay, um, any of the taxes. They just hold off. I mean, they can, but they don't usually, that we've seen. So. Do you want to have?
One other to admit to that, for anything that appeals to the Property Tax Commission. So they're not required to pay once they've appealed that. But we also don't have the authority to enforce any kind of collections on them. So if they're in the Property Tax Commission appeal process, then we cannot go after them for delinquent taxes. Even though the taxes makes it delinquent for even a couple of years, we've seen that too. So that's why we have to adjust what we think the revenue is going to be for the appeals that are out there.
If they're in appeal, do they gain interest?
They do have to pay the interest, yes. But that's, although that's money that will come in at some point, it's in this one point in time budget you're ever looking at that we wouldn't have that catch.
So. Any questions on?
Some projected value of commercial property in town for two thousand twenty-five is two eighty-three ninety, two hundred and eighty million, three hundred and ninety thousand before these appeals. I read that correctly.
That's got the appeals.
Right, yeah, so we've, we've allowed for a percentage of appeals in the, in the purple.
Yeah.
Okay, that's where I was going. What, what, how, what percentage do we use? Well, I'm not supposed to know that magic math. Or is it an Excel field somewhere?
It, it's, it's a pretty drawn-out formula that we use to, based on historical data. Mm-hmm, based on historical data that, that we keep on file between each revaluation.
Can we summarize? Like, do we anticipate, when someone appeals on a commercial property?
Sure.
How do we anticipate how many of those will be successful, what percentage they're likely to bring them down? Just curious. Or, oh, actually, the effects, because that makes the two eighty-three ninety-one a projection.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
Which it all is in some ways.
Right, so we take the, um, we take the historical data that we've had over the last few revaluations, especially in the commercial area. Because that typically is a lot of your big box stores, um, that do that. And we look to see not only what they appealed, but what they ended up with. Like what was granted either through the, um, the county, um, or the Board of E and R, or the Property Tax Commission. And we try to average that out. Um, so it looks, although commercial was thirty-three percent of our value that is currently appealed, that's not necessarily where it's going to end up.
With things though.
You know?
Yeah.
Um, so we tried to gauge the historical data, and I think this year we're looking at roughly ten percent. Um, which is still significant.
Thirty-three percent.
Right.
Something like that.
Yeah.
But. So thirty, thirty percent of the thirty-three percent might be successful in their appeals?
Which is what we've.
That also represent the dollar amount, obviously, that's what we're trying to get to, is how much do we think the tax basis?
Right, so we apply that to the value to get a dollar amount. And so that's how we've come up with this figure in purple.
We think that, based on historical data, the overall tax basis will be reduced by around ten percent. It would be thirty-three, thirty percent of the thirty-three percent.
I can follow with that. Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I was trying to understand, like how do you decide?
Yes.
We don't know who or how much they'll be successful, but historically, it's around, and that's with factoring in the shutdown.
Yes, because it's based off of their real property value, um, which is land and building. And also, uh, personal property is factored in. And that's where I think we see some of the negatives, um, from the prior year.
Are properties that are owned by DOT, are they part of, is their tax value included?
It's not.
So if, if a property sits in, um, a governmental order, um, of, an organization that qualifies for exempt property, they're not included in any figure we have on here. Um, that would certainly include any property that sits in DOT's name as of January first. So it might change names during the year, but taxes are always billed as of the property owner of January first. So if, an example of DOT sells a property in March or April, we still don't get the benefit of collecting on that property until the following tax year.
But there is the potential for some of those to come back to us.
For some.
Eventually.
Yes, eventually. Um, and we don't have any way of knowing. As far as I understand right now, property acquisitions complete for the DOT project. Um, so I don't know that we'll see significant, more significant reductions based on, for that purpose. Um, but if properties go into nonprofit names that qualify for exemptions, then we lose that value as well.
I'll add one thing to that. Um, as far as DOT sailing any of that right away? Uh, the only places they would sell it right away is where they've been put in a position to have to buy excessive right of way that they don't make. Which is not a lot of.
Like if there is a temporary construction easement at the end of the project, they would sell it back to.
No, no, temporary construction easement is just for back to the property owner when the project's open. But that's not property put in DOT's name, it's a temporary construction easement.
Okay. So we still need those tax dollars?
We'll still get the tax dollars off what DOT did not purchase. But there again, that's something that some property owners, and rightfully so, will think is unfair to them for a three-year period of time for the DOT deployment as a temporary construction easement. They've got to pay taxes.
But they were compensated in some regard.
They were compensated for their property, and they were also compensated for, uh, I think, access and inconvenience. Uh, especially access if they were to put up a controlled access fence, which this will not be controlled access. If they were built for life, and they put up a controlled access fence, that property owner would also be paid for not having access.
There have been some rumors fly around about that project and property acquisition. So, uh, I know there's been some pretty widespread confusion, and I probably have some of it too. Are you, because I, I heard several stories of, of whole lot purchases when that wasn't required. Which I kind of thought, were the DOT, what I was told is that they tend to buy the whole lot when the road's going to take it up or not in some cases, like rice and farm supply, that's what they understood it.
Right.
Are you saying that's not the case with a lot of lots, or?
I'm saying that's not the case with a lot of them.
Okay.
Uh, but what you're seeing is sort of deceptive, because if their work touches a building, I'm talking about an inch.
Hmm.
Then they got to pay for that building.
Right.
Without buying the property and tear it down and clean up the mess and pay for all of it. So it looks like they bought it from the other end of the building, but it's just about what they needed for right of way.
It touches the bill.
Kept a temporary construction easement and paid the bill for the cleanup, for the tearing down the building that they touched with their right of way. That's my understanding.
Okay.
There's a booklet on our website under the one oh seven section. It gives a, a great synopsis of the right-of-way acquisition, purchase, or process, and also business relocation process. That's probably the best information to get there.
So I'll give you an example of a piece of property that they bought more than they need, probably could be acquired or something. Uh, the old Hamilton office, uh, between the old Ford place and Gansville, returning to Sunrise Farm. That building that was there, that little small piece of property had like four parking places behind it. They had to buy the whole thing. Because there wasn't anything left enough for them to feasibly use.
Hmm.
So DOT bought it all. And then when the project's done, according to the way the plans show, there's a portion of that they won't use. And one of the things I was thinking is that might be one of the opportunities that this board could apply to. Because if, when, when they have, uh, right of way that they can dispose of, the first option is to give, or give first option to the adjoining property owners to buy it. If they don't exercise that, the second option is municipalities can get it for free as long as it's used for public use. And I thought right there in front of the red light would be an outstanding place for a sign that says point to historic downtown Silver. But that's an example of a few places where they would wind up with more than what right of way they need for what's on the page.
Other questions about the appeal process?
Same done with residential?
Yes.
Projected based on historical appeals and.
Yes.
That's right.
That is right.
We know how many appeals have been applied.
That's what that number is right there, just sixty-two. So the residential and commercial down there, that's what that is.
Sixty-two and sixty.
I guess, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. This is very clear. Thank you.
Thanks.
So the next page in that packet, um, you've seen before, but we thought it might be helpful now that we have a little bit better understanding of what's gone on in appeals. Um, for you to see it again. So the top is an overall revaluation comparison. For you just to see in what category we're looking at a significant value difference in. Um. Residential had a higher value difference than commercial. But in the green section down below, if you take the residential and break it down, you can see by corridor in the city limits where they experienced a more significant increase. So the highest being the Dillsborough Road area. And we tried to just pick out the, based on the average house that we had in the previous sheet, pick out a, a property that was close to that. So that you could see in each corridor what that area is looking at for increase. So the Skyline Drive area, Savannah Drive, Cherry Street Roads Cove, and Dillsborough Road are all main quadrants, pretty much, of, of city limits. Uh, you can see that the Cherry Street, Dillsborough Road area has the most significant. The box store comparison below that. It does not take, um, as many commercial appeals to make up a larger appeal value because they are so much bigger. So not that all of these in, under this pink section here, applied for an appeal. But it's just to show you how much weight, if one of them appeals, it could carry on our tax value, or in tax revenue. So, um, the other two large comparisons are more industrial and, and healthcare-related with Jackson Paper and Harris Regional Hospital. So they might see a large increase in their value to them, although it might not carry, you know, as much here. So all that to say. You have to understand that the number of appeals, the, the true number of appeals that actually happen is not truly what happens to our tax value. Because we have such large, within the city limits, and large commercial properties, other, you know. That one or two of them can significantly affect the tax value.
Is two maybe appeals public record, public knowledge, or just the number of how many appeals?
So the county has that data, I assume it's public. I really haven't ever asked that, but that's just, um, that I can certainly find out.
I remember in, in the past, there, when it went to the Board of E and R, would have a schedule of whose appeal was coming before it. So I know that at some point that is.
If, if they make it to the Board of E and R, I think, sure, since it's going to be published. There will be a lot that don't ever make it to the Board of E and R, because they're settled within the tax office personnel working with the property owner.
At this box store comparison, um, there's good information if you look up about the theory of, uh, the dark store. Of how that, how those stores with, that have a lot of land appealed on their value, um, how remodel impacts. I'll try to find some articles and send to you. It's very interesting to see the overall impact those stores have on the community. And then when they, when they relocate and don't fill their spaces, is, is another piece of it. So I'll send that to you all.
And those, along that lines, those are the ones that we would typically see making it to the Property Tax Commission in Raleigh that we wouldn't be able to collect on. So that's a significant amount of revenue, um, we could potentially be without for a period of time. And it's because they have the money to go to the state to find it.
Right. I mean, that probably cost twenty thousand dollars, and your, your average property owner is not going to go to that extent. Anything else about the revaluation? So as I mentioned before, we are, we are balanced. We'll start with the revenues. So you've got the summary sheet. So one says revenue comparison, there has the line items behind it. And then these are your line items. Um, and it's got the R on the right-hand side. Um, so I'm going to go through the summary sheet with revenues, then we'll do expenditures. And feel free to stop me as we're going through. So. On your revenue sheet, mainly what I'm referring to is what's in your yellow column, and I'll let you know if I'm jumping to a different one. So your, the estimated versus the original in taxes of four hundred thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars. This is based off of your revaluation estimate. Vehicle taxes have a decrease of ten thousand, and that's based off of our budget versus actual what's been collected. Business registration permits. And I'm just jumping ones that are big or, or that are mentioned in this yellow column. So we're changing the registration permitting process and starting in July. In the future, you'll see this, um, this revenue should come back in this, in a zoning line item. Interest on investments is a projected increase of twenty five thousand. That's anticipated due to our current interest rates. Main Street Program and Greenie at the Mountains, um, increase in two thousand two hundred twenty dollars. This is based off of the proposed bringing up the mountains and Main Street budgets estimating revenue increases. Still fixed assets thirty seven thousand. That's based off of what we are anticipating, anticipated to sell from capital for capital replacements. So this is department heads that have estimated the value of trucks or vehicles and what would come into the town for that. Franchise tax on power increased sixteen thousand. That's the current budget versus actual past history and economic conditions. And that's the same with our three articles of sales tax, um, forty, forty-two, thirty-nine, and then the whole harmless tax. But also keeping the one oh seven project in mind. Cow bill has an increase of seven thousand dollars. That's because we received more in the current year than we had anticipated. This Jackson County Economic Development and hundred thousand dollar increase. That is what the county commissioners, um, have agreed to give the, the town for the next five years to help with the has to be used for economic development, but to help offset the loss from one oh seven.
Hundred thousand per year.
For five years.
That's a new line item there. That hasn't existed before.
I'm not mistaken, that's what we went and asked for. The change of distribution and ABC money and they decided rather than change the distribution, just give us money.
Yes.
And rarely.
Well, there's more benefits of what they're doing than what everybody realizes. Like just give us some money, we could use it for other things besides alcohol training and all of course.
Whereas the ABC money can only be used for this.
Only certain percentages, um, that the state sets are set aside for alcohol, um, education and rehab. So general, generally there's more flexibility doing it this way and we don't have to get into who consumes alcohol or where it's sold or what store is more profitable during what season of the year.
My end result is, uh, our camp made a generous schedule.
But it, but it's kind of more temporary than than adjustment to the which I get their take on that. This, our situation is hopefully gonna be somewhat.
Um, police department fines and fees are decreasing by five thousand and that's based off what we have uh, in the current year. Additional use appeals are the same, but then sales tax refund, uh, one thousand five hundred seventy-five dollar increase. That's just based off of our refund. And there is, you'll see in the blue, the first the first one, but the third column is we won't have the general fund balance appropriation proposed. Cow bill decrease of thirty-two thousand. That's just what we spent on the second avenue paving and this current budget, we won't have in the upcoming budget. Fund balance rollover of two hundred fifty-nine thousand five hundred two dollars. This is the garbage truck that you all have approved the purchase. That will actually receive it in the pending budget. Then recreation department has a thirteen thousand four hundred sixty-two dollar increase. That's based off of pool operations. Uh, the fire department, um, has a large increase, seven hundred twenty-seven thousand four hundred five dollars. That's requesting two additional employees from the county. The four hundred ninety-five thousand three hundred of that is the pumper rollover. Um, and then ninety-eight thousand is also the future payment on from the pumper that we're hoping to receive in twenty twenty-six. But it's been a word. Um, let's see. Down to grants and proceeds. Look at the orange column there. You see the pumper, the pumper truck and the skid unit of five hundred seven thousand three hundred. With federal grants, there's a decrease and that's just not receiving certain grants. And these, those two, um, the one that says highway safety and Walmart. Then going towards the bottom, the transfer from capital reserves. This is fifteen thousand two fifty. This is a portion of the leaf vacuum. Part of that'll be paid in street. So the total appropriated fund balance at the bottom, two hundred fifty-nine thousand five hundred two dollars. This is, um, the garbage truck. That matches up to the line we just discussed. So our total general fund battle, total general fund budget proposed is seven million five hundred twenty-five thousand six hundred seventy-seven dollars. So we're looking at an increase of a million five hundred fifty-six thousand four hundred fifty-eight dollars. And as we've talked about, we're buying a lot of equipment this year. That's primarily the bulk of the increase, but you also will get more into the expenditures of net sections. Are there any slack involved revenues?
One of those, you mean three lots of water, right?
For the expenditures. Thanks. So.
How bill, I'm sorry, is that repaving?
Yes, um, it's received from the state. It's based off of our population and off the mileage of city streets that we maintain.
It was passed Raleigh.
Yes. And and it fluctuates to a certain degree, but there is never a huge jump. But the point of it is for towns to put it back into paving the streets. Anything else on revenues? So expenditures, that's your next summary sheet, um, looks like this. Again, we're paying attention mainly to the yellow column. There've been increases in almost every department as you can expect. Mayor and board increase was fourteen hundred dollars. That's the increase in training and the cost of liability insurance. The administration department has an increase of thirty-two thousand eight hundred twenty-five dollars proposed. That's, um, two new computer equip, equipment in administration, uh, salary and benefits. I T, uh, the cost of subscriptions that are increasing and just other specified expenses have that we know are going to, that accounted for. And again, you've got your line items behind it if you wanna dig more into the detail. And we're always happy to answer questions as you go through these. Main Street Program has an eight hundred sixty dollar increase. That's travel training. Professional services that has a four thousand four hundred dollar increase proposed. This is Police Department, um, is two hundred and one thousand three hundred ninety-nine dollars was proposed for an increase there. Uh, eighty-seven thousand of that is the community care worker that's been budgeted for to become a town employee. This increase in wages and benefits, uh, liability insurance, workers comp, auto maintenance needs additional funding, training and uniform replacement. Street Department has a sixty-eight thousand dollar increase proposed. That's a portion of the leaf vacuum. Auto maintenance, a snowplow, radios and part of that leaves vacuum that also transferred from capital reserves. Cow bill, the decrease of twenty-five thousand and that's what we had. We really took two years of paving for Second Avenue and put that into cow bill last year. So we're gonna, we're still planning on paving the same amount. It's just last year's last year's budgeted amount from capital was was high of the larger project it was gonna carry over.
It also made more sense the way they got, they got done with that development.
That's correct.
And we thought it would be done one year and it was completed in the next year. So streetlights, there's a twenty-six thousand six hundred dollar increase proposed. That's what we're anticipating due to streetlights being replaced, the decorative poles being replaced downtown. And then also on one oh seven. We have found out in the, in the last few weeks that we can light one oh seven the corridor section with wood poles. Um, a lot of those, we use the existing wood poles that, that Duke already has. Um, so at the corridor now, some are wood and some are metal. The metal poles can't be reused because there, Duke has a policy where you can only light a metal pole underground. And we can't get underground utilities on one oh seven. So the great news is we can afford to light corridor.
Have wooden poles instead of decorative.
Yeah, those distribution lines are gonna be there regardless. So we might as well put lighting on.
So we're not having to do the half a million a year thing. That's good.
Yeah.
Thanks for making it more fat.
And we'll add there, we'll add this to add a receptacle to those poles that will hang the Christmas decorations. Which was something we were concerned about several years ago.
Maybe we can upgrade those Christmas decorations.
They're wonderful. They get new bulbs every year. So.
I know, it's, it's not easy.
Just trying to reference, the snowflakes cost five hundred fifty dollars apiece last year. So and we'll hang seventy-five.
Yeah.
So that's why we kept them up so long.
Yeah, you gotta get the best out of it.
There are decorations and there are winter decorations. That's a discussion for another day. So.
Thinking of Christmas decorations. I hope we're gonna light up our new bathrooms next year.
Yeah. Got special outlets, just.
Sanitation is the next one. That had two hundred sixty-three thousand, a hundred ninety-three dollar increase. That's the garbage truck rollover primarily. Facility maintenance, um, pretty small increase, seven thousand seven hundred dollars. That's a increase in natural gas, electricity, building maintenance and viability insurance. We're also adding a building with the bathroom. So non-departmental, uh, nineteen thousand nine hundred, nineteen thousand four hundred forty-five dollars. That's liability insurance, uh, pay study. We have an election next year. Mislaid appropriations of two hundred fifty-seven thousand seven hundred twenty-five dollars. Um, that's a large contribution to the Scotts Creek stabilization project. Um, and increased cost for operating swimming pool.
It's share expensive assuming with the county.
Yes. So the town owns the pool, the county operates it. And then we split the, the cost. Yes. Well, it, it generally is the laws. It's hard to make money, honestly.
They don't charge a lot to get in there. Yeah, at your house, sound.
I'll say we usually have some kind of capital uh, purchase that they do each year just to keep keep it updated and stuff. So about twenty thousand a year is what's spent. Like what we plan on spending in maintenance. But unfortunately, it's not a moneymaker. So general government budget, um, without grants and proceeds has an estimated increase of eight hundred seventy-two thousand five hundred forty-seven dollars. That's totaling all the things that we just talked about. Then the fire department, um, that's seven hundred twenty-seven thousand four hundred five. That's the two additional employees, the pumper truck rollover and the payment. So you see the, uh, total expenditure increase of just over one point six million. Uh, the total general fine budget increase at the bottom in the green is seven million five hundred twenty-five thousand six hundred seventy-seven dollars. That's a increase from the prior year of a million five hundred fifty-six thousand four hundred fifty-eight dollars. Of all of which we just talked about. Why did I think the two additional employees was coming from the town? It is, but they pay the town. If, if the county decides to do it, they'll pay the town and then the, the town pays the employees. Questions on the expenditures?
In that case, it looks like we're spending more money. We're not actually spending more money. It's also on the revenue side. For less, yeah.
And like I said, if you go through the line items, feel free to ask if you have any questions. Anything else with this? Okay, so then our looking at our budget priorities. So the last meeting, the board ranked their budget priorities. And I've got it on the screen, but it's like this, if you don't. What's in yellow is what we were, were able to build into this budget. There's several things we didn't. Um, we did not put the skate park in the budget because the county at some point will decide where that's gonna be. And if the town is able to contribute, we can, we can do that at that time. But I didn't feel like it was final until they've got more concrete plans to build that into this budget, even though that one was a high priority for the board.
Is there anything left of the stuff we had with our script?
No.
No way. It wasn't, none after the flood, I don't know what was saved to be allowed.
So we've budgeted for sidewalks, cross sidewalks prepare, crosswalk prepare. The renovation of the boutique bathroom is in another project. But will be accomplished. And then the full-time community care worker becoming a employee for the police department. But at this point, we need direction from the board if you wanna make changes, if there are additional things you wanna find discussing where money would come from, um, or if you're happy with this version of the budget and the. or if you're happy with this version of the budget and the providing the same level of services and then the additional priorities if we're good to move forward with the draft.
Can you go over one more time with the full-time community care position currently funded as a grant? Is that grant in June thirtieth? Does this start July first?
It ends, so next year we have to contribute more money to it. But we're still getting, receiving a portion from Western. It would be a full-time employee likely June first. Uh, June first.
So next.
Yes. Twenty-six.
Are you saying we have been able to budget for that when we have to pay for the whole time?
Yes.
Well, it's in the budget.
Yes, it's in the bu, is proposed in this budget. Other questions?
The uh actually, easy crosswalks. Is that something DOT needs to repay?
It is, but they have their own standards. And if we request a crosswalk to be freshened up before it, it needs it per their minimum standard, then we generally have to pay for that.
Okay, could they cut out just a certain section? Or if they were to pave it, would they pave the whole, the whole block?
Well, I'm not aware of any prioritization, the paved main oil mill street in the near or distant future, probably what they'll, they'll do is just uh, charges a small feet of fresh enough thermoplastic in those crosswalks. Um, and maybe do some patchwork within those crosswalks. But a wholesale repaving is not planned or prioritized to the best of my knowledge.
I think they published their schedule five years out in advance and it made in mill or not on it.
I was thinking, I was thinking Backstreet is planning to be paved in two more years.
Uh, not that I'm aware of, if I would, I would like this. Uh, that's true. I'll check on it.
Okay.
Is Dills Cove Road off of Dills Road, a secondary road that Palville's funding hits or where does that money come to?
Dills Cove, um, is a state road, the one that turns up the hill and goes under the interstate. Yeah, that's a state road.
So where would funding go to patch that bottom part?
We can, we can do that because it's right at the corner of a town maintained road and state roads. We can fill that. And that just falls under general maintenance, that's not something that needs to be specifically budgeted.
But other questions? Are there any specific changes you feel like need to be made before we move forward with the draft budget? Okay. So you all will receive the draft budget, um, Thursday, April the eighteenth and have a week to review it before going into our budget work, our next budget work session, April the twenty-fourth. Where we'll also review the fee schedule, um, which I know one change will be how we do the business registration permits and offer, and updating the hourly rates. Um, personnel. Then we'll, that will get us to May eighth for us presenting to the board and then adopted the first meeting in June.
OT Paul, can I?
Yes.
Under this project. Your plan on remodeling the whole.
Yeah, that's a little. Well, yeah, well, last exterior on that particular structure because it's in a lot better shape than uh, the Bryson Park structure was, but we'll be pulling, probably firing out those block walls, uh, updating the copper plumbing with packs, uh, new fixtures, new wall coverings, new stall partitions, uh, fresh paint, tile, the whole, kind of the same thing we've done at Bryson Park. And imagine as closely as possible fixtures and furnishings of the, the new public restroom.
Definitely have a question, I know we've got timed self locks on the, the new bathrooms.
Mm-hmm.
Um, which ain't a bad idea for these bathrooms as well.
It's my goal moving forward to slowly retrofit every public facing locking door with a time lock, especially at the parks.
Is there any way locking the gates for the park could be done remotely?
Anything's possible with enough money.
Um, we're starting to have a hard time getting the park locked up.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not aware of such a thing, just that, that maybe it's not out there.
That's on your agenda.
Yeah, it is. And actually, and actually, to be clear, we don't have many problems in the park. We did for a little while, yeah, but managing things. Yeah, so, um, the problem that you run into is the time when the park is supposed to be locked, that's our probably busiest time of the day. So our police officers are out doing more important things.
Yeah, I'm sure.
And so you know, oh, it's two AM, I gotta go lock the park.
Well, there was, I mean, actually, the way the park got its namesake is Charles potato was an employee of the town. He opened the park every morning and he walked over here and loaded every night at dark and stopped and had coffee with my mother on his way home. And uh, so uh, it was a town employee that did it years ago, the police officer.
That's the problem with those, at that darkness time, they're busy. And, and just, I mean, just to be completely honest, it's not very high on priority list, then the, the gate, that gate gets locked. But when we get complaints and that kind of thing, it rises up on priority list. But that would be, there's a way, we can lock, lock itself to certain time.
There's maybe fifty-five to ten big little whereabouts, about three o'clock at the point.
Yeah, I can, I can tell you right now, they're getting locked, that's their special.
Yeah.
And turning there at three o'clock in the morning, it's locked, all of us, it's trespassing.
Just discuss. And take a motion to adjourn.
I made a motion, I'll make that motion.
Adjourn the motion, man. Change the schedule. You like sporting, please. Okay, triple motion.